We thank you for our city, for our county and state and for our country in which we live in freedom. And we thank you for these who give of their time to serve the public and to handle the matters of the public. And we pray, Father, that you would just give them wisdom or give them guidance in doing the right things that are needed for our communities. And, Lord, help us to encourage them and to be a blessing to them in return. So, Father, we pray for this meeting. We pray for your guidance and wisdom and the decisions that need to be made. Ultimately, we pray, Father, that we will join together in unity and seek to unite, that we might glorify you in everything. And so, we pray for your blessings. We pray for your working. And we pray ultimately that all things will be done in decency and in order. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you sign that real quick? Okay. Ms. Vok, what do you call the role?
Mr. Howell?
Present.
Mr. Winger?
Present.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Old?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
I am here. We'll go ahead with the agenda. Additions, deletions? Anybody from the staff have changes?
Yes, Mayor, we would like to move item 2D5 up on the agenda and have it heard under 2C1. That was a mistake that I made. It should have been up there all along.
Okay. Any other changes?
No, sir.
If not, does counsel have any changes?
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next, we're going to do the proclamations and recognition, National Telecommunications Week. Mr. Howell?
Thank you. Whereas the health and safety of our citizens and visitors is critical to the city of Vero Beach, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police services and the availability of the Vero Beach Police Department's 911 Communication Center is integral to the peace of mind in each individual and the security of our community, and whereas the men and women who answer these calls for help, excuse me, gather essential information and dispatch the appropriate assistance, which is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas public safety dispatchers are more than a calm and reassuring voice at the other end of the phone, they are knowledgeable and highly trained individuals who work closely with our police officers, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the dedicated dispatchers of Vero Beach Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals and the safety of our community, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, does hereby proclaim April 10 through April 16, 2016, as National Telecommunicators Week. Hopefully, I said that correctly. In honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
And I believe we have some of our finest here today, as well as the police chief and some of our 911 operators. You guys like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you. You know, as a supervisor, you always hope to have a good team, and me and the citizens of Vero are fortunate to have a good team and our 911 dispatchers. So many times that people don't call 911 for the good times, they call us for the bad, so many times we don't get thanked. So, we'd like to thank Chief Curry. Thanks for coming in for one, and thank you for the proclamation, and thank you, City Hall, for, City Council, for this proclamation.
And I just want to thank you for your professionalism and dealing with people in a stressful time, because needless to say, that's very difficult to get, you know, find out what the issues are and to calm them and to be able to address it. And I really appreciate the kindness.
Thank you. It's a stressful and thankless job, but we appreciate all that you do.
While we don't want to use you, we're glad you're there.
Right. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Thank you very much for this proclamation. I could tell you, if you just sat there for 10 minutes and maybe longer, you would see a bit of what they do. I cannot, to this day, after almost 27 years, tell you exactly what they do as far as, you know, what they have to deal with and the stress levels that they have. Different types of calls, you know, they get some calls that are basically minor, if you will, but then we all know, they get the calls that someone screaming and yelling in the back that there's an automobile crash, or there's someone who was just stabbed or hurt or injured, or somebody's not breathing. And they gather that information in a calm way, share it with our officers, so that the lifeline to the officers, it's total teamwork. We are very fortunate to not only have a dispatch center in our city, we are also very fortunate to have the caliber of people, and there's just three of them of the 10 behind me, but the caliber of the people that we have, that I do witness, is just a blessing. It really is. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Next, we're going to have equal payday proclamation. Ms. Turner?
Yes, Suzanne Jones here, a member from the AAUW, if you'd like to come up here and I'll read. Thank you. Good morning and welcome. More than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time, year-round, in 2015 typically earn 21% of what men earn, indicating little change or progress in pay equality. According to Graduation to a Pay Gap, a 2012 research report by the American Association of the University of Women, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling the factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. In 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which gives back to the employees their day in court, to challenge the pay gap. And now, we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which would amend the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. Nearly four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their household, and nearly two-thirds are significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. Fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. According to The Fight for Pay Equity, a state roadmap for Florida, published by the AAUW and updated in September 2015, the median earnings for men in Florida was $40,971, compared to women, $34,768, an earning ratio of just 85%, or sixth out of all states in the District of Columbia. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Vero Beach does hereby proclaim April 12, 2016, equal payday, and urge the citizens of Vero Beach to recognize the full value of women's skills and contributions to the labor force, and to further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation, and to ensure women are being paid fairly and equally. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to address the City Council and for proclaiming April 12, the equal payday in Vero Beach, Florida. My name is Suzanne Jones, and I am a member of the Vero Beach Chapter of the American Association of University Women. AAUW was founded in 1881 for the advancement of women and has fought for issues such as voting rights, education, health care, equal employment, and equal pay for 135 years. It is astounding to me that I find myself in the year of 2016, standing on a public platform, still discussing these same issues, and today, more specifically, equal pay for women and the pending Paycheck Fairness Act. The equal rights amendment of fair pay for women has not been updated since 1963. Many people are unaware that a pay discrepancy still exists, even though there's been a long history of legislation designed to fix this issue. Today, women still earn an average of 79 cents on a dollar compared to their male counterparts in the same job. That's a 21% pay difference. Therefore, it takes a woman in the same job until April 12 of the following year to earn what her male colleague earned in 12 months. Women of color have even a larger discrepancy in pay. According to the Institute of Women's Policy, it will take women another 44 years, until 2058, to finally reach pay parity if biased business decisions and legislative progress continue at the same rate. State and national equal pay activities have been around for many years, so our chapter decided to create an equal payday awareness right here in Vero Beach. We want to have a little fun while we increase public awareness and advocate for women's equal pay. We're sponsoring a promotion on April 12, encouraging local business owners to offer women a 21% discount on qualifying purchases. The discount can be on a dessert, or a cup of coffee, on a sale rack, or perhaps their entire purchase, whatever the merchant feels that they can afford for one day. There'll be posters like this one up all over town, and I'm sure that women will be encouraged to shop in the stores that support them. Our goal is to increase awareness and advocate for equal pay for women. As it states in our proclamation, we urge the citizens of Vero Beach, Florida, to recognize the full value of women's skills and contributions to the labor force, and to further encourage businesses to conduct an internal pay evaluation, to ensure women are being paid fairly and equally. So, I hope our local promotion creates some interest and provides information, and that women take the time to shop at their Vero Beach businesses on April 12, receive their discount, and please thank them for their participation and show your support. Our Vero Beach AAUW chapter wants to thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you and for your proclamation participation. I also want to note that there are some officers from our student campus organization of AAUW, of Indian River College, in our audience this morning.
Lovely. Welcome.
And some of the other officers from our local chapter. We're very proud of our student organization. It has taken a tremendous amount of effort to get their group established, so we're very happy that you're here this morning. So, I want to thank you for your time and for your interest. I brought some materials with me that I would like to leave somewhere or pass them around, if you would like, and giving you some other statistics. And I've also brought some little stickers that say "Pass the Paycheck Fairness Act", and some others that say "Equal Pay Day is April 12, 2012." So, I want to encourage you on April 12 to put this on your lapel when you're walking around that day, doing your important business here in town, and we're definitely going to have lots of ladies out walking around that day, making sure that you're wearing them, okay? So, I will leave this with you. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. You handed me stuff. Nice to see you.
Thank you so much. And it is amazing, we're still talking about this. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you could. Thank you very much. You guys want to come up for a picture?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to do the Relay for Life proclamation. We have a couple of young women that are from the Relay for Life.
That's you.
I'll go ahead and read the proclamation and hand it over to you.
Of course. Yay!
The proclamation states that the American Cancer Society is a nationwide, community-based, volunteer health organization dedicated to eliminating cancer as a major health problem through research, education, advocacy, and service. And Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society's unique, fun-filled team event to increase awareness in the community while raising much-needed funds for the fight against cancer. And the heartfelt love and caring shared by friends and family during Relay for Life is truly inspiring by celebrating survivors and remembering those who have lost their battle with cancer and uniting our community. And long before the last walkers approached the finish line, new friends have been made, old friends have been hugged, and all hearts have been touched by the magic of Relay for Life. And the Indian River Unit of the American Cancer Society will hold their annual Relay for Life under the Oaks at Riverside Park on April 15. It is that the City of Vero Beach therefore does hereby declare that April 15, 2016, is Relay for Life Day, and encourages the community to support the American Cancer Society and their efforts to help everyone who has been touched by cancer.
Thank you so much for recognizing this wonderful event, and I'm Alaa Kramer, and I'm the chairperson for the Relay for Life of Indian River Beaches. We actually have three relays in the Indian River County, where the community come together to, like Julie says, remember the people who have lost their loved ones, celebrating survivors, and fighting back by trying to find the cure, by raising millions of dollars during Relay for Life. We do have three opportunities for people to come out this year. The first one is under the Oaks on April 15 at 6:00 p.m., and it goes till midnight. Then there is April 22, which is in the Riverview Park in Sebastian, and on April 29, the Vero Beach High School, that's an overnight event from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 in the morning. So, I would encourage everyone to participate and come and join us in this fight. And with me today is also Teresa Woodson, who is our senior manager for the Treasure Coast, and Nancy Madsen from the Vero Beach Relay.
Well, I encourage and suggest that all of you should visit one of the relays, under the Oaks, and then in Sebastian or at Vero Beach High School, and you'll enjoy it. We celebrate, we remember, and we fight back.
Chairman and counsel, thank you so much for taking the time to acknowledge what this community does in the way of supporting cancer survivors and caregivers. I've been a caregiver over the years for my father. I have several family members still battling cancer, and being affiliated with the American Cancer Society is a source of great pride for me. I'm exceptionally proud of these women and many of our volunteers who couldn't be here today, because most of our volunteers are actually working full-time jobs and, on top of that, dedicate so many hours and so many talents and even some of their treasures to our efforts to fight cancer. And Nancy Madsen in particular, it just tickles my heart to know that she started as a volunteer years and years and years...
Ten years.
Okay, and years ago. Came to work for the American Cancer Society, retired in the fall, and is back as a volunteer again. You can tell that this is someone who has really, truly been embedded deep within our association and appreciates all that we do. To come back and volunteer for us again is amazing. I want to just share with you very quickly why I think it is so important that we continue this fight against cancer. When you look at some of the things that we know, we know that the lifetime risk of having cancer is one in two for men. So, I'm looking at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5 men here. One in two lifetime risk, one in three for women. We cannot afford to step back and just hope it happens. We need to continue this fight. What have we been able to do over the years? Yes, we've funded a lot of research, everything from the PSA test, many of you are familiar with, the pap smear, many of you are familiar with, mammography, that has helped us with early detection of breast cancer, technology, treatments, drugs like Gleevec and Herceptin and Tamoxifen, and the list goes on. Forty-seven Nobel Prize winners among our researchers. There are not many organizations that can claim that. We strive very hard to fund the very best research, no matter where it is. And yes, it is true that there is not a lot of cancer research happening in Indian River County. So, where do your dollars go? Well, they go not only to research, your dollars go to serving patients right here in our community through some of those discoveries, you know, from research, but also through just, you know, quality of life services that are provided to our patients and to their caregivers. From our 800 number that is answered every minute of every day, so when you just can't sleep at 3 o'clock in the morning, you will have someone to talk to. You will have emotional support, you'll have support from qualified licensed nurses, you'll have help with insurance problems, you'll have help finding clinical trials, and the list goes on. We can actually even translate into 212 languages on our 800 number. Our website provides a plethora of information and a very detailed stewardship report, because we do pride ourselves in being very transparent with what we do with your dollars. On the Treasure Coast, I just want to give you a little snippet. Just in 2015, 1,400 patients were served with patient services on the Treasure Coast. Some of those services include what we call a transportation program called Road to Recovery, where volunteers help us get patients to treatment. My favorite recent story, just a few weeks ago, a road to recovery driver from Vero Beach volunteered to pick up a patient in St. Lucie County and drive that patient 130 miles to Miami for surgery and back. The program, while it's funded and supported because there's a lot of background, things that have to happen, and training, and, you know, registering and background checks and all of that for our drivers, the drivers provide their own gas and their own time. That's just tremendous to me. And that patient received the surgery she needed because there was someone to take her. Our Look Good, Feel Better program is another program that helps women look good and feel better, everything from wigs and cosmetics and so forth. We had an increase, going back to Road to Recovery, an increase of 13% year-over-year last year of patients who utilized the Road to Recovery program. We have about 16 drivers on average in the three counties, Martin, Indian River, and St. Lucie Counties. We have four hotel partners, two of them right here in this county, the Hampton Inn, which is right here in the city limits, and, excuse me, Howard Johnson's, not the Hampton Inn, Howard Johnson's, and also the Spring Hill Suites are partners with us, providing free rooms to patients who need that. So, sometimes, you know, a patient coming from Belsmir or, you know, even, you know, further west in Indian River County, who might have to have radiation treatment daily, driving back and forth for that kind of treatment is really difficult. They would be able to stay just within a few miles of the hospital where they receive that treatment, so very helpful for them. And on the advocacy level, this year, we were able to secure $2.1 million for the Mary Brogan Bill, which is for medically underserved patients receiving mammography, breast cancer, and cervical cancer screening, and also $20 million for biomedical research in the state of Florida, and $67.7 million for tobacco prevention and education. And on the national level, we engaged our volunteers nationwide through our ACS CAN, our Cancer Action Network, to petition to put more money into the National Institute of Health for cancer research. And so, this year, it was announced that $2 billion additional dollars will go to the National Institute of Health. So, we are fighting cancer on many fronts, and we cannot do it without all of you and your support. I particularly want to thank Tammy for being the team captain for the City of Vero Beach Relay for Life team. I know she has at least 10 members on her team now. I hope all of you are members and that you will encourage others to join your team and to be at Relay, to celebrate our survivors, and to help us fight back. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Do any of you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a comment. Helen Bowling over in the police department is also very active, and she is selling raffle tickets to hit the police chief in the face with a pie. I would encourage her to purchase as many raffle tickets as possible. And Helen Bowling, and she's right, as you walk into the entryway of the police department, administrative assistants sits right there in that window, and be very happy to take your money and let you have your ticket. It's a great opportunity.
And I would say, if there are any other VIPs in our community who would like to accept the Pie-in-the-Face challenge and raise funds and come onstage and be pieed in the face, we also have Dr. Rendell from our school district, who has accepted that challenge and will be doing the same thing. We just decided that it's just time to have some fun while we work very hard.
But what kind of pie is it?
Well, you know, if you raise the right amount of money, we can make it whatever kind of pie you like.
We can do blueberry cream.
Blueberry cream, okay, yeah. There you go. You want to make sure that you say the telephone number and your website, just so the public knows?
Yes, our website is vericeycan.org, and our telephone number is also very easy. It's 1-800-ACS, like American Cancer Society, 2-3-4-5. So, 1-800-ACS-2345. And we do have an office here in Vero Beach on State Road 60, and I welcome anyone to come in at any time and see what we're doing there. And, you know, if you don't have a lot of treasures to put toward the fight, you probably have a lot of talents that we could use. So, if there's anyone watching, listening, that would like to join us and volunteer some time, we'd be very happy to have you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Here it is. Thanks, great, thank you. Thanks very much. Great.
Oh, Tammy does, Tammy has that form.
Well, no. She, God bless.
God bless you.
Certainly didn't have to move very far.
Professional model, when you came, you got into city council.
That's right.
I'm a volunteer, huh?
Don't worry, he doesn't run very fast. Never trust an attorney with a camera.
I just like when they're volunteering.
He's taking it softly. You got it backwards.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to go ahead with the staffing consultant reports from the Utilities Commission.
Good morning to the City Council, staff, and the community.
So if there's anyone watching, listening, that would like to join us and volunteer some time, we'd be very happy to have you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here it is.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much. Great.
Tammy does, Tammy has that form.
Well, no. She, God bless.
God bless you.
Certainly didn't have to move very far.
Professional model when you came to get into City Council.
That's right.
Don't worry, he doesn't run very fast.
Never, never trust an attorney with a camera. He's taking it softly.
You got it backwards.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, next, we're going to go ahead with the staffing consultant reports from the Utilities Commission.
Good morning to the City Council, staff, and the community. I have, I had the honor last month to be elected Chairwoman of the Utilities Commission, and it's my pleasure to present their annual report. For those who are not familiar with Utilities Commission, Utilities Commission is an advisory board to City Council in, actually, three areas, in electric, water and sewer, and stormwater, which is becoming an increasingly important issue. And beyond that, we are charged to represent not just the city, I think that's a bit of a misperception, but not just the city, but all ratepayers, including the county. And I take that very seriously, and we will make sure to do that. The report, and I'm going to read these two phrases, this is our overall or umbrella mission, if you will, is to obtain the lowest possible sustainable utility rates and the efficient operation of the utilities. And secondly, to provide detailed information in a friendly format to the public. And in that regard, being friendly to the public, I would like to, the very next issue on here is electric and has to do with FMPA, is to invite the public to our meeting next week, this is our regular monthly meeting, on Tuesday, April 12th, we meet here in the chambers of City Council, or City Hall, I should say, at 9:00. And Representative Debbie Mayfield will be attending, and she will be speaking first regarding the House Bill 57, excuse me, 759 that died. That had to do with the FMPA, which is why I'm mentioning it now, because that was our first, our first objective on our list is to continue to monitor FMPA issues and receive regular reports on that. So I've asked her to explain why this bill failed. I've been asked that question myself by a number of people, and not being the person who, you know, who was pushing it through, that can be a hard question to answer. And personally, I like to get my information directly from the source. So I think it should be interesting. I invite the community to join us, to ask questions. You know, like City Council mentioned, I think at previous meetings, the idea of having a PR agency and that sort of thing, I, you know, let's try a different tack. Let's invite people in. And by the way, that works two ways. People should feel free to approach me, and they have, you'll see that during the course of my report, you know, regarding different issues. But at any rate, so we will continue to monitor FMPA issues very directly, starting a week from today with Representative Mayfield. And we discuss who should be the city's representative. And for those who don't know, FMPA is basically a conglomerate of 31 municipalities, most of whom are represented not by elected officials. We, and I think two others, and that may have changed since then, we are represented, were represented, excuse me, by Councilmember Old, and currently are represented by the city manager. That's something we're going to take up. Previous commissions had recommended that we have an elected FMPA representative. I tend to agree with that myself, only in terms of accountability. Not that Mr. O'Connor isn't proficient in all of these areas, but in terms of accountability, where you're up for election every two years, it's very direct, it's a more direct, certainly a more direct accountability, just by definition. So beyond FMPA, we are to continue to monitor and make recommendations to City Council on the sale of the electric system to FPL. And I know for anyone in the community out there who's watching, I know that there were referendums on this, and you may be wondering why this hasn't happened, and I'm sure there are, it's a multifaceted issue, but it is in some way, shape, and form tied to FMPA. So in terms of obtaining an exit cost, and that's one of the things that was in this bill, this Bill 759. You may recall, last year, there was a state audit of FMPA that uncovered staggering losses. I think it was about $250 million, and also industry, or practices, excuse me, that did not meet industry standards. So this year was more of a follow-up to that, where Representative Mayfield was seeking to obtain a fair market valuation of FMPA. We've been in it a very long time. I think the contract goes another, did you say 40 years, Jim? I think I asked you one time.
Yes, the life, the life of plants, of the plants.
Right, so just, thank you. So for those who might not know, the contract goes another 40 years, as it stands right now. So this is, it's a hot issue in more ways than one. So it should be interesting. And again, I invite everyone next week. We also are to continue to work closely with the Finance Commission, and I'm very happy to say that of the 10 meetings that we had last year, four were with the Finance Commission. And I'd like to thank the Chairman, Peter Gorey, and the Vice Chairman, Glenn Brevant. I am always very pleased when we meet with them, because they really do, you know, the total becomes more than the sum of the parts. I mean, they really do bring a huge amount of expertise to it. So I'm very happy to report that, that literally almost half of our meetings were jointly with the Finance Commission, and I would hope to do that again this year. We'll also be monitoring the budget process, and the city provides some of the budget, as well as, for those who may not know, an outside consulting group, which is PRMG, which stands for Public Resources Management Group. And beyond that, we are looking into renewable energy and solar power, and we've had meetings on that. We had a joint meeting with the Airport Commission. I don't know if they'll invite us back, because we took three hours, and they didn't, they had to break for lunch before they had their regular meeting. But, you know, the three hours, I mean, we were taking it very seriously. So for those, in fact, when I left that meeting, I went to Publix to buy blueberries, and the cashier asked me what I thought of solar power. She had been watching this. So I, people are paying attention, people are interested, it is important to do these things, and I'm happy to do them and happy to look into them for the public. And, oh, this is also, this is a special project undertaken by our Vice Chairman, Bob Allwitter. He will be working with Mr. O'Connor to perform a comprehensive comparison and analysis of the differences in utility rates and operations between Vero Beach and Fort Pierce. And they also have a municipal electric utility. And then he's going to report back if he can identify some best practices that we may able, you know, may be able to apply. But he's undertaking that on his own, and I really, I applaud him for that. And finally, my favorite one, one that I suggested, is to monitor the magnitude, frequency, and duration of power outages, as well as the causes. And in fact, at the meeting next week, that is on the agenda. And I encourage people, I actually have two stories, it's the story behind the story. I have two instances where people told me about power outages, and we'll be discussing it next week, Jim. But it's, you know, it's as simple as somebody was walking the dog and ran into me and said, and these, by the way, this is important, not that it's not important for the community or for residences, but these were businesses. So they're actually losing money when the power was out, and they both, I happen, this was happenstance, I happened to speak to two different restaurateurs the same day. One happened to be walking the dog in the morning, and he said, "Did you know the power was out last night?" This was, let me get the date, da-da-da. This was on March 21st, that the power was out. And he said, "Did you know?" And it wasn't out, this was, this was along Ocean Drive, okay? And I live not far from there, but I didn't have an outage. But at any rate, these two businesses, the one in the morning said it was out, you know, from 4:00 PM until about 6:00 or so. So of course, that affects his business. Now, the other one, I happened to go out to dinner that evening, and just in speaking with the waiter, he said, "Oh, we had, yesterday, oh my goodness, the power went out at 4:00. The chef had a party of 18 people coming in at 5:30, and the power went back on at 5:25." And I thought, oh, you know, that chef must have been sweating bullets, you know, was the power going to come back on? So, I mean, these, it's the story behind the story. Yes, there was a powder, power outage, but, you know, when people tell you how it affected them, you know, there are some very compelling stories out there. And by the way, I encourage anyone to contact me at any time, as I said, we, you know, we represent all, you know, residents, all ratepayers. And you can contact me at Laura, L-A-U-R-A, at Moss, M-O-S-S-L-M dot com. So please, you know, do that. And we, I said, we'll discuss this next week. But we're going to talk about why it happened and remediation, and how to prevent that kind of thing in the future, because listening to those stories, I know it's a very hair-raising thing for businesses, and of course, you know, having had my power out a number of times, I know it's inconvenient for residents as well. And then we'll go on to water and sewer is another of our major concerns, and I'm, oh, I want to thank Mr. Bolton. I had a tour of the water treatment plant last week, that was very interesting. And previously, I had toured the sewage treatment plant and also the power plant. So I think I've done the three of them now. What we're doing with that, in terms of our objectives, is to monitor the health of the lagoon as it relates to water and sewer. And one of the things within that main goal is to consider reuse water. And this is not on the sheet, but actually, Mr. Bolton made an interesting suggestion when we were, when I was touring the plant, and he's, he's looking into, or is considering, suggested lining reuse ponds at John's Island, Reamar, and Mooring's. Actually, lining the ponds so it doesn't leach through. I guess they have golf courses and that sort of thing. So he's considering simple, you know, but effective ways of dealing with this, things we can do right away, that are not too costly, which I certainly would encourage. Beyond that, the second one is to continue to make recommendations and encourage open lines of communication with the county. And interestingly, I had a water question, but it had to do with water lines out at Sandridge Golf Course, which the city does not handle. So I called, I think, believe that was Commissioner Davis's area, so I spoke with him, and he helped answer that question. But again, you know, you can always ask me, and I'll, you know, I'll find out where to go after that. Getting back to water and sewer, we're going to continue to work with staff on optimization. And Mr. Bolton was telling me that the staff is now at about 51, that's employees, down from 86 employees in 2007. And he attributes that to being able to automate some of it, to cross-train, and also the outsourcing of the lab, which I think was a major cost savings. Beyond that, we monitor the budget process for water and sewer, and we have quarterly reports on that. And let me see what else. And, oh, yes, and continue to provide detailed information in a user-friendly format. And I think, by the way, that's really critical, and I believe that we did that. For those who didn't see it, Mr. Bolton, I think, made a very good presentation at the Utilities Commission meeting, which was held on February 9th. You may recall, that was when we had that boil water notice was out, and he came in, and I asked him, I said, "Rob, can you, could you please explain it in layman's terms, you know, so the community can understand?" And I think he did a very good job of it. And I would say to the community now, just to remind you, or to tell you if you are unaware, that this is available to you on the website, on COVB, City of Vero Beach, COVB.org. You can go on there and watch any of these meetings. This was the Utilities Commission meeting of February 9th, and I think it was very well explained. So, you know, we'll continue to do other things like that, try to provide information to, you know, directly to the public, try to explain what can be a complex thing in simpler terms. I tend to do the same thing with Representative Mayfield next week. That's a very complicated issue, and I'm sure getting it through is, you know, extremely difficult. But I want her to explain it in such a way that the community hopefully can understand, you know, why these things, you know, fail, because I think there's a degree of disappointment out there. And the final issue with regard to sewer and water is to monitor potable quality and quantity, and we'll probably have reports on that, I'm sure that we will, in fact. And finally, stormwater utilities objectives are to monitor, and we're proceeding with that, I know the second part, but for anyone who doesn't know, there's a study being done right now. The first half was completed, $50,000 was spent on that. The second half, the budget was approved, which was approximately another $50,000, and that is underway. So I don't, do you have a date on that, Mr. O'Connor, when the completion of the study, the stormwater utility study? Did we have a date on that?
No, we do not have a final date on that yet.
Okay, well, then I'll just say that that's underway, and when it's completed, we will be reviewing it. Okay, and I'm not going to, this, this report, and by the way, for the community, this report is available, again, on the website, COVB.org. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through all the discussions that we had and all the recommendations that we had during the year. I'll just highlight a few, probably the ones that are, well, FMPA being the obvious one, we'll be addressing that next week at our meeting, the lawsuit filed by Indian River Shores, which is, part of which, I guess, is going to be addressed today, it's on the agenda. And by the way, we did, people who have been watching the council meetings over time may recall that our attorney, who's present and probably will speak later, was meeting with the attorney from Indian River Shores at the end of January, and I had requested at a City Council meeting that a report, or transcript, or some written information be available, not only to the commissions and the council, but also to the community, so that we can all understand the process, and so that we have, I don't really care for the term myself, transparency, but, but just, you know, so people can, people can understand what's going on. From Indian River Shores, I guess, and I just received this recently, there is a report, a five-page one, and I guess we have, we have, what, a one-page one? I do not have a copy of it yet, but a one-page one, okay. So, and that will be distributed, okay, very good. All right, and I'd like to, actually, I have one question, which doesn't have to do with utilities, but someone asked me about, and this is where, you know, when you're out in the community, and again, I invite people to approach me with any question whatsoever, but this had to do with graffiti in J.C. Park, east of the Boardwalk Cafe Restaurant, and, you know, who should take care of that?
We take care of that. Public Works goes out and tries to either pressure wash or cover it with paint. We have graffiti on electric poles and stuff like that, we try to attack it.
Well, could you, could you do me a favor, then? Could you make a note and take care of that? Because I told the person that I said, "Well, I happen to be going to City Hall, you know, in a few days, so I'll be sure to mention it to them."
Yeah, if it is in the city park, we take care of it.
It's in, it's on the boardwalk. It's a sign that's on the boardwalk. It's a notice sign, no alcohol, it's one of those. It's directly east of the Boardwalk Cafe Restaurant, and the graffiti's on the reverse side.
We'll take care of that.
So they'll be happy about that. But in closing, in closing, I would just like to say again, I encourage, you know, the community to participate, you know, to, if you can't come to the meeting, you can watch it on COVB.org. It's a great source of information. Or, you know, contact me. And again, it's Laura, L-A-U-R-A, at Moss, M-O-S-S-L-M dot com. And I'm happy to answer any question, even about graffiti. Okay, did any, did anyone on the council have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Congratulations on your nomination as Chairwoman.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
With that, we'll go ahead and move on with Item 3D. Mr. Dana Little with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council.
Morning.
Mayor and council members, Dana Little with the Regional Planning Council. In the interest of time, I've got a presentation, but I'm going to go through this as quickly as I can, so if we need to come back later to a slide or an issue, I'd be happy to. But we were requested to make a brief presentation this morning, just describing the type of services that the Regional Planning Council has been conducting and providing over the last 25, 30 years. And as it relates to the direction going forward with the city for the power plant, the wastewater treatment plant, and the, and the postal annex. Just a few fun facts, the Regional Planning Council was established in 1976, we're one of 10 regional planning councils within the state. There are 50 municipalities and 1.8 million people within the Treasure Coast region. And the Regional Planning Councils were created by and for local governments within the Treasure Coast to provide services. There's a long list of services that we provide. I'm going to focus this morning really on the public planning processes, as opposed to law enforcement support and hazardous materials support, et cetera. We've got a long history of working with local and regional partners that are agencies, public agencies, be they counties, metropolitan planning organizations, the St. Lucie Transportation Planning Organization, the Water Management Districts. And I'm very happy and proud to say, one of our most recent partners has been the Cultural Council here in Vero Beach with the Cultural Arts Village Project that we're able to work on. Focusing on the, our expertise, if you will, in citizen-based planning efforts, we've been doing the charrette processes or the public planning efforts since 1989. We've led 93 public charrettes, like the one that we did here in Vero Beach throughout the state. We've assisted with 23 others. And I won't read all these to you, but, you know, the planning efforts range from regional in size to neighborhood in size. I'm going to focus this morning really on the public planning processes, as opposed to law enforcement support and hazardous materials support, et cetera. We've got a long history of working with local and regional partners that are agencies, public agencies, be they counties, metropolitan planning organizations, the St. Lucie Transportation Planning Organization, the Water Management Districts. And I'm very happy and proud to say, one of our most recent partners has been the Cultural Council here in Vero Beach with the Cultural Arts Village project that we're able to work on. Focusing on the, our expertise, if you will, in citizen-based planning efforts, we've been doing the charrette processes or the public planning efforts since 1989. We've led 93 public charrettes, like the one that we did here in Vero Beach throughout the state. We've assisted with 23 others. And I won't read all these to you, but, you know, the planning efforts range from regional in size to neighborhood in size, just like the Cultural Arts Village. And then, when we're asked, we also will follow up with those efforts with implementation efforts, like revising land development regulations, or modifying local comprehensive plans, or even developing architectural design guidelines, like we just completed in Delray Beach. But, you know, at the core of what we do is community involvement and citizen participation. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. Now, understanding that this is sort of putting context with the power plant and the wastewater treatment plant, I just thought, if you'll indulge me, I'll go through a little bit of history of our efforts with waterfront projects. You know, back in 1988, we worked on, and I wasn't at the council then, but we worked on the first master plan for the city of Stewart, and that was followed up in 1998 again. And one of the issues was not just redevelopment, because things weren't really happening in town, but in 1998, the Roosevelt Bridge was coming in, and it was going to eclipse this waterfront park that was right there at the tip of the point there, heading over to Jensen Beach. And one of the efforts that was really critical is to, working with the community, identify through renderings and drawings and analyses, but that just because the bridge was going to be casting a shadow over these public lands, they could actually be wonderful places. And in fact, over time, they have become wonderful places, through private investment, there's been the Sunset Bay Marina, Flagler Park, if you've been there. So even though the bridge came in, and initially the thought was it's going to ruin these public areas, through working with the community, we're able to show that you can recapture these places and reinvent them, really. So, you know, we've been working with, and that's our home base, you know, in Stewart, we've been working with Martin County and Stewart since the late 80s, but establishing a long-range plan. You know, we didn't go out there, Treasure Coast, and turn the shovels and build the projects, but working with the community, we helped establish a long-term vision. And that was the same thing in Fort Pierce, back in 1998, and then again in 2005, with the downtown master plan and the waterfront master plan. If you know Fort Pierce, here's the sort of now infamous, I guess, Indian River Drive and Avenue A roundabout design. But it was implemented, and it became an important piece of that waterfront connection downtown, as was the Manatee Observation Center, that was born out of the original charrette, and now it's in place. And again, these were ideas that were brought up through the process by the community. And as the Regional Planning Council, as I say, we aren't the developers of these things, but we helped channel that input and that interest into, hopefully, implementable projects. This is a more ambitious one, this is the H.D. King Power Plant Concept with the Morris Creek, and, you know, that has been under a process of cleaning up the site. In fact, the waterfront plaza or promenade came out of the original charrette. You know, we've got this beautiful piece of land, we should make it a public space, a civic space, and that's exactly what, you know, the city did. And in fact, you know, in each of these cases, the cities and the citizens deserve all the credit. But as I said, as a Regional Planning Council, we just provided the process and the channeling efforts. And following up with the H.D. King Power Plant Site, we actually assisted them with the securing of grant funding for brownfield assessment and revolving loans to clean up that site, which has been underway for a number of years. Lake Worth Beach, if you know the old casino in the Lake Worth Pier, it had been in failing or in sort of ailing condition, I guess, for a number of years, but it was a very contentious process, because the public was so concerned that the casino and the pier were going to be turned into some major commercial venture in condos and all of this, and they were going to lose a slice of what made, you know, that part of the beach in Lake Worth so unique. So we were brought in, and it was a very contentious effort, but through, again, the public charrette process, developed a number of drawings and recommendations, and actually influenced ultimately the design of what was built by REG architects. You know, sometimes we say that, you know, our role isn't to build, I mean, my training is in architecture, and I'm not actually doing the architecture, but with the community, we're establishing what the game plan is, and what a level playing field is for the private sector to come in and do these things, like the Lake Worth Casino construction there. So this was a great example, I think, of establishing public consensus, providing design direction, and helping to really mitigate some acrimony that had been in place between the community and the city for a long time. Jensen Beach, this was interesting, I must say, I think this is only the second beach master plan I've ever worked on, but, you know, this cherished amenity in Jensen Beach, which was called the Sea Turtle Beach Cafe for years, it was in ailing condition, like the casino in Lake Worth, but again, a cherished amenity, and the community really had a strong attachment to it. So we went through a public process, as usual, identifying, you know, not only options for redeveloping the cafe itself, and there were some big policy questions involved in this. For instance, do you or do you not sell alcohol? Because that changes not only the character of it, but it also changes the business model significantly. So that was a big discussion, we came up with a number of different designs, actually developed estimate pro formas for the different options, whether you did a complete rebuild, a remodeling, and then there were some economic strategies, too, in terms of what the business models meant with or without alcohol sales. And, you know, that gave the, especially some of the business analysis, gave the county a basis for making programmatic and design decisions. And since then, it's under new management, actually, the county's managing it, and they haven't implemented any new construction, because they decided not to go with the alcohol sales, which limited their ability to do things. But they had analysis to base those, and community input to base those decisions on. And finally, the last project I'll walk you through is Riviera Beach. We've worked with Riviera Beach for two decades now, and most recently in 2008, working with them, not only their marina downtown plan, but also their Ocean Mall redevelopment. I don't know if you know the area, Ocean Mall out on Singer Island, but, you know, from the initial sketches that we worked on with the community, to then more refined computer renderings, which influenced ultimately, which got built out there to a degree. And then the marina plan, which is their downtown plan on Broadway, developing renderings that reflect the input that we got from the community for Bicentennial Park, and their public promenades and access to the water. You've got a, you've got a very large minority community that was, that was very concerned about redevelopment, limiting their access to public parks and waterfront promenades. So that was a critical piece of the overall plan. And I'm happy to say that after a number of years, the plan is actually under construction in the new Newcombe Hall. Song and Associates Architects in Palm Beach County are the architects there. And our role has been to, in this particular project, you know, the master plan that we developed with the community was adopted, they asked us to update their CRA plan, the comp plan, redid the land development regulations. So we've had a partnership, whether it's in a current agreement or just as part of the region, we've had a partnership with all of these cities now for decades. The process, for those of you, and I think most of you on the dais participated in the charrette for the Cultural Arts Village, we have honed over the last 20 years a charrette process that we feel very strongly about, we think it's very successful. There are a number of phases of that, I won't go through all of them, but it starts with a host committee of citizen representatives, and they help us drive this ship, if you will, to get to points of consensus in a planning effort. The host committee is made up of eight to 10 individuals, representatives of the community, they help us identify logistic, or help us resolve logistical issues, identify venues for public events, et cetera. For the Cultural Arts Village, it was the leadership team that Barbara Hoffman, with the Cultural Arts Council, established that served as that host committee. We typically do between 40 and 60 individual interviews, and then we ideally host a week-long charrette, like we did in Vero, which starts with an intense public design session on a Saturday, and then we set up a design studio, like we did at the Hampton Inn, where we were there for a whole week, where the doors are open for people to come in, and we exchange ideas, and modify and refine things as we, as we work throughout the week, and then wrap that up with a work in progress presentation. And, you know, the mission of the Regional Planning Council for years has been that with, working with the community, we need to advance our planning from the 70s bubble diagram ideas, where you never really knew what you were going to get, to a more refined type of plan that really looks at the surgical nature of redevelopment. You know, 99.9% of our efforts in the communities in the region have to do with redevelopment. And that's a lot different than greenfield stuff, where you don't have to worry about the neighbors and the existing streets and the historic trees. So we've been advancing over years our planning, and then these days with technology, of course, it's even gotten more interesting, where, you know, we can start to imagine what changes over time might be, even on a corridor like US-1 in West Palm Beach. Oftentimes, we're also asked to bring in a team of consultants that work with us that are economists, that basically ground, you know, the grand design ideas that the architects and planners come up with, but also test the market, to make sure that you're not heading in a direction that is fruitless. You don't want to go and put all of your eggs into a basket that has a hole in it. So, you know, bringing in the economists is often something that we're asked to do. Our typical team includes architects, urban designers, engineers, retail consultants, and economists. Local staff is always critically important, that we include, that we partner with the local staff, and, you know, with the local staff here, Mr. McGary, that was a very cooperative effort. And here are some other fun facts. Typically, 80 to 90% of our project teams are private sector professionals. We have, over the years, and this is the one of the things I'm most proud of, is we've developed a team of private sector individuals that we draw upon, depending upon what the scope of any particular project is. We have a roster of over 30 consultants that we've used over, for different reasons at different times, and many of the folks that we've worked with, we've worked with for nearly 20 years. So we've got long-term relationships. If you participated in the charrette, or if you've been, well, you've had many charrettes here in Vero, you know, it takes a certain personality to be a designer and a professional, yet also work well with the community. And so, you know, we've been lucky over time. So, you know, just briefly back to the power plant, our advice to you, not that you asked for it, but is that the city of Vero Beach really needs a sound, you need a sound basis to make some of the decisions that you have to make regarding the power plant, the wastewater treatment plant, and the postal annex. Now, your joint committee recommendations are very important, it's a key start. I think you've got 29 or 30 recommendations there, that talk about uses, that talk about what should go, what shouldn't go, like no gas stations. So you've got decisions to make about appropriate uses and scale, project financing, do you sell all of it? Do you lease all of it? Do you only sell or lease some of it? What is the phasing of that? Because we know that the wastewater treatment plant will lag years behind the power plant. And that's okay, that's not a deal killer, but you need to think about how you sequence the project, and how you protect one from the other over time. You'll have some, probably some comprehensive plan implications, certainly some land development regulation or zoning code implications. And then, frankly, the voter referendum is a huge deal. So before you solicit input from a developer or establish a public-private partnership with a private sector development team, you need to have an idea of where you want to go, and some support from the community for that, because they're actually, your community is going to sound off on this first, their referendum. As I went through the recommendations, I think about, it's a rough estimate, 30 to maybe 40% of those recommendations have some degree of commercial component involved. Now, that doesn't mean that they're condos or, but just the leasing of kayaks, I think, goes against the charter provision for these sites. So these are things that really need to be taken into consideration, you know all of this, but to have a public process, whether you decide to work with Treasure Coast, or you go with any of the number of firms I know that you've gotten a list of, which are all very reputable private sector firms, however you decide to go, it must be really a meaningful public process. So, thank you for your time. I hope that was kind of what you were expecting, and I'm certainly happy to try to answer any questions.
I have a couple. So you use private sector professionals, which is great. So you have a project in Vero, do you pull from the professionals in Vero, or do, assuming they're available, or do you bring them up from other cities and towns?
Well, that's a good question. We have been working with a number of the same consultants over the years, so we've got a team that we've kind of built that follows us around, depending upon, but we're always open to local talent, absolutely, and there's no reason for us not to. It's just, there's a certain unique nature to some of the work that we do, so, you know, but we're always looking to add to our team.
Okay, thank you. And second question is, you know, every time there's an opportunity for redevelopment, y'all are vying for our attention, which is fine, because that's what y'all do, but I'm just curious, how does the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council determine its take-home?
Its take-home?
It's, how do people, such as yourself, that's providing services, determine what out of that project goes to funding the work that y'all do?
Okay, so when I develop a estimate for a project, based upon, you know, having had a lot of experience now with the Regional Planning Council and understanding, depending upon the type of project, for instance, we can gauge the scale and the number of people hours that are necessary within our office, the type of consultants that are necessary. You know, if there is an economic analysis that is desired as part of the scope, we know that that's typically this chunk of work, you know, with this cost. Same thing with engineering. You know, we find ourselves now doing a lot of projects with DOT, working with the community to do lane eliminations, where you've got these roads that are too big and maybe taking a road away. If that's a desire of a community, and I'm not saying it is here, but we know that that has a certain amount of scope and a certain amount of time. So we break it down based, our cost estimates are really just pass-through costs to us, what our time is, and to what the consultant team is. I mean, we're a nonprofit, you know, agency.
Yeah, I understand that, I just wanted to get a better understanding of how that...
I hope I answered the question clearly.
It's fine, appreciate it.
Greatly appreciate your time, and I do wholeheartedly agree, it's got to be a public process, we are dealing with some lands that are rather sensitive, but...
Absolutely.
Really, really thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, how long do you think the process would take?
The, which part of the... You know, typically, if, let's say it was, you wanted to, you wanted to establish a vision for these parcels, you know, that can be done in a number of months. Then getting that vision adopted, then getting that vision implemented through code changes, there's the voter referendum part, if there's some piece of this that you want to have as commercial, and I would think you would, not so much as a revenue generator, but gee, it's nice to have a restaurant or something on the water, you know what I mean? So, you know, I think that whoever you work with, you should try to understand that those are different pieces that have different timeframes. Just establishing the initial vision and maybe getting a draft report back could be six to eight months, you know, maybe a little bit longer, depending upon how long it takes to get the process rolling. But, you know, just using the Cultural Arts Village as an example, we had our charrette started in September, and then we were back here this month, you know, with a resolution. So that was pretty quick, but it's the other pieces, you know...
Do you ever do surveys or anything like that?
We have, we have. We've done surveys either through presentations. You know, the great thing about survey is that you can generate data. The problem is that the data is only as strong as the data sets that you started with. So, you know, if you can, what I, if there was a desire to do surveys, I think online surveys are great, because people can access them at any time, as opposed to trying to survey folks who just come to a presentation or a workshop, because you're limited by who's there, and then it can skew the data results, but...
What I was thinking of was, if this has to go to referendum, is it wise to do a survey about what people are looking for first, so that you do abide by what their wishes are, sort of in advance?
I would say, I think that any information you get is good, but I would make it clear that you're not, I mean, it's one thing to take a survey, it's another thing to conduct a poll, and then rank, "Well, everybody says they want a Ferris wheel out here, so that's what we're going to do." That may not be in the best interest of the city, so you've got to filter that through your professionals and yourselves. You know, it can't be a free-for-all, that everybody gets a little piece of what they want, and then you end up with nothing. But I do think that, you know, hearing what is supported, certainly there's obviously marine-oriented uses that are supported. I think it was pretty clear in the recommendations that this shouldn't become a three-corner gas station truck stop type of scene, because it is a gateway into and out of, you know, the mainland. But I would definitely support that idea. And I would also support, you know, you should, I also read in one of the, and I'm sorry to go on, but in some of the correspondence, that, you know, you have... to go on, but in some of the correspondence, that, you know, you have the luxury of time and patience in this, I think.
Yeah, we do.
And you should really feel comfortable about what it is you're doing. You should solicit a presentation like the one I've given from all walks of life, to see, you know, who's out there and who really fits best with your community. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just as a comment, my recommendation is that we don't start any real planning efforts until we clear this site. I think the community's vision of that property is going to drastically change when we get that cooling tower down, the two oil tanks and the two water tanks there, and start filling in that area, and people actually see what we have. Many of the comments I'm getting from the public is, they just see really an industrial complex. And I really believe that vision's going to change substantially. We take down some of those old buildings and really change the visual of that, and then you start soliciting input from the community as to, here's this piece of ground, now what do you envision now, as opposed to just pulling things out of the air.
Mr. Mayor, can I, a comment, and I think most are not, if not all of us, walk the property with the city manager, and you start thinking about, you know, the maintenance building gone, the cooling towers gone, the tanks gone, level ground there, even to the north and south of the plant, there's going to be a lot of space, but it is just a magnificent piece of property. It's a magnificent piece of property. And, you know, the other thing about it is, the fences will be gone, you know, to the canal to the north, to the river. There's actually a boat ramp behind it, there's actually a dock behind it besides a slip. When people start seeing what the public owns there, I concur with Jim, it is just a magnificent piece of property. It's beautiful, I mean, just beyond belief.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
You too.
Mr. Hanisak from the Florida Atlantic University.
This comment, Mr. Mayor, I invited this presentation, it was held at the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments and Regional Governments, and I thought it's offered in the way of background, I think there's some good data in it, I don't expect any conclusion, but it is a learning process, and we certainly welcome you to share your knowledge, you have a lot.
Well, thank you for that really nice introduction and for the overall invitation. So, I am Dennis Hanisak. Turn it on. Okay, thank you. So, I'm a research professor at Harbor Branch Oceanographic. Many of you have known that institution over the years. Since the last day of 2007, we're part of Florida Atlantic University. I should say on the citizen's side, I've here in Indian River County for a long time. I have a Vero Beach address. I'm one of your people who get utilities, but I'm actually not in the city, so that's where I am on the citizen's side. So, it's really a pleasure to be here. I'm going to talk to you today about something that we've been working on called the Indian River Lagoon Observatory and our network of environmental sensors. And already today, just sitting, I heard, you know, several mentions to the lagoon and concerns about lagoon. I'm not going to go into great detail about all of the issues I know from following the media and so on. You know, most of you are very familiar with these freshwater releases, changes in water quality, very recently, you know, in the past couple of weeks, you've known about the fish kills to the north that just happened. You know about the freshwater discharges from Lake Okachobee into the St. Lucie Estuary and impacting the lagoon and so on. So, we have a lot of work on that, at Harbor Branch, and we're now in our fifth year of something called the Indian River Lagoon Observatory. And the idea really there is to, kind of the way, you know, astronomers use observatories to look out and observe the stars and the planets and gather a lot of information, oftentimes in a very remote fashion, our goal is to try to get as much information and more importantly, I think, knowledge about how the Indian River Lagoon works, and particularly how it can be sustained long-term, how it can be managed. And so, as a scientist, I always feel we have to understand how it works, and then we get into, you know, recommendations to how best to manage it long-term. I'm going to focus very specifically on just one aspect of our observatory, which is this network at advanced observing stations. And the idea here is to, you know, like my analogy earlier, is to be able to gather a lot of data, importantly, real-time, so not waiting for, you know, a couple of years for the data to become available. And they should be very accurate, they should have high-resolution water quality, and we're doing this through a dedicated website that anybody can get. So, you all can get this at any point in time, as can the public or anybody who wants it. So, we're measuring, for water quality, we're measuring the, kind of the normal standard things that most of us are interested in, so things like temperature and depth and dissolved oxygen, and those particles in the water, and we worry about dirty water, which is turbidity, the particles, and the discolored water, which is water color, or there's a fancier word, cedon, that you sometimes hear. The pigment in the water, those algal cells, and again, we do that routinely, but you also know about the blooms that have returned to the north. So, the way most of us measure that is chlorophyll A. Also, very interesting to me is that we're able to measure real-time nutrients, nitrate and phosphate, and I know that you've been very proactive in recent times, too, with the fertilizer ordinance that the citizens brought forward and so on. So, you know how important getting indicators of nitrate and phosphate in the lagoon are. Some of you may be interested in what the instrumentation looks like. This is what it looks like, sitting in a lab bench, a lot of sophisticated sensors that all are interconnected to something that's labeled there as a StorEx, that's kind of like the data logger, that's like the brain, and all these different sensors will connect. Most of them are optical sensors, which basically means they shine a beam of light through the water, and we're able to detect certain things, such as the particles. But we also have a little bit of wet chemistry, if you will. The phosphate, for example, is basically a little auto-analyzer that's measuring phosphate in the water. We do this every hour, and when we first put these out, they look really nice, because as you know, once you put them in the lagoon, everything, your boats, your docks, anything you put in the lagoon is going to get fouled. So, we have a lot, that's actually the biggest challenge with this kind of monitoring, is keeping the instruments free from fouling, minimize it. So, you see there in that image, everything's brand-new, it's been taped, it's been painted with anti-fouling paint to kind of reduce the amount of fouling that we get. And that's what it looks like on the way out. Most of our sites, we have a weather station, but they, overall, we always have a solar panel that is what provides the power. And we have, you see an antenna, basically, once an hour, we basically get a cellphone message that goes to a server that makes the data available. When it makes the data available to us, it makes it available to everybody at the same time. We have a dedicated website that's easy to remember. I also left some little cards that have a little card with the same information for you and a little map of our sites. But this is a very user-friendly website. You can go and get real-time information at our weather stations or at the water quality sites. But most importantly, I call your attention to the tab at the top, which just says Lobo Vis. And I really encourage you, if you're interested in this at all, or if you want to pass it on to those of you, those people you know that might be interested, is just click on that and play with it a little bit. It's very user-friendly, it will get you to a menu that will allow you to pick and choose whatever parameters you want, whatever dates you want, whatever sites you want, and you can ask the questions that you have, and you can get data, you can download the data, and put it into an Excel spreadsheet and plot it a different way, add it with other data, you know, whatever you want. We started the station, our first station was done in 2013. We did it right at the Harbor Branch channel, at the end of the channel, in the Indian River Lagoon. The funding for that came from Harbor Branch. It was basically a commitment to kind of launch the network. And then, very quickly, our foundation, the Harbor Branch Oceanographic Institute Foundation, invited us to submit a proposal, and we launched three additional sites, including the ones in Indian River County. So, I call it our northern network, our first station, I can't really point that against anything, but you can see the one that's labeled HBOI at Harbor Branch, that is our first site. Then we went to the Fort Pierce Station, which is just north of the North Bridge. Those of you know where Taylor Creek is, there's a lot of freshwater discharges there. We have the great Fort Pierce Inlet. I say great, because it allows some misexchange with the lagoon, that allows for a lot of the biodiversity that we see in our local Treasure Coast waters. We then put one in Vero Beach, that one specifically is in the southern end of Vero Beach, not far from Oslo Road. So, as you know, there's three canals in the main part of the canyon here in Vero Beach, the three relief canals that discharge most of the water from our lands. And you know that a hundred years ago, it was necessary to build those canals to drain the wetlands, so that people could live here and we could have agriculture and so on. So, that's a really important part of the story as to where we are today. We also have a site in Sebastian, just south of the Sebastian Inlet. Again, we have the interaction of the ocean water, we have the freshwater outflow from the St. Sebastian River, which drains the northern part of the county and the southern part of Brevard County. So, these were all sites that we are very interested in, that interaction of saltwater, freshwater, and land, and what we humans do. And then, thanks to a legislative request with the state of Florida in 2014, we, last year, started to deploy in our southern network, oh, sorry, that's just a quick note on when sites went on. The first one went in 2013, the rest of them went in locally in 2014, the end of the year, and also very early in 2015. So, we have a good year of data at all of our Indian River County sites, for example. So, to the south end, we got support from the state to launch the St. Lucie Estuary component of this. So, for those of you who know that area, you know there's huge issues, especially, again, this year with discharges from Lake Okachobee, but actually, when there's not Lake Okachobee discharges, there's also very significant watershed impacts in absence of anything from Lake Okachobee. So, we have stations at critical locations, the North Fork, the South Fork, which is like the two arms of the St. Lucie Estuary, they come together. The previous presentation talked about the Roosevelt Bridge, that's where downtown Stewart is, and so the site that says SLE ME, ME is mid-estuary, that's right there near the Roosevelt Bridge. So, that's kind of an interesting coincidence with our two presentations. The water then flows down through Stewart and out into the Indian River Lagoon. We have one at the crossroads area, so those of your boaters know that the, that's an area, a common name, for where the estuary, St. Lucie Estuary, the Indian River Lagoon, and the inlet kind of all come together. So, it's a really dynamic location. And again, we're interested in the interaction of that freshwater that's influenced by our activities on land and the ocean exchange. We also have a site in Jensen Beach, which is to the north, which is kind of a local Indian River Lagoon site, that gives us an idea of what amount of that water from the St. Lucie Estuary goes north. We know from other work at Harbor Branch, Dr. Ned Smith, that about ninety-one percent of that water actually just goes right out the inlet. It does have some impacts there, because there's a state coral reef park, the St. Lucie Reef there, some of my colleagues at Harbor Branch work on that, the coral impacts. It's the northern extent of corals that form the Florida Reef Track. So, again, a very interesting place that we live in. So, about nine percent of it goes up toward Jensen Beach, so we're able to see what that looks like. These all came online starting last July, and we finished the last one in September, so they're closer to eight months, they're not up for even their first year yet. But we did get them in in time prior to the most recent freshwater discharges from Lake Okachobee. I wanted to show you some real quick graphs, I'm not going to give you a lot of data, because I want to invite you to all go and find your own data. And I always like to show this one, because it was from our first station, and it's salinity, and we all understand salinity. We may not understand all the other water quality parameters, but we all understand that we have the ocean, we have freshwater discharges, we know that the ocean's salinity is about thirty-five parts per thousand, which would be at the very top of that graph. And we know that it varies a lot in our estuary, in our Indian River Lagoon, and why is that? Well, it varies, because you all know we have wet season, we have dry season. So, you'll see there that the salinities are highest typically at the end of the dry season, and then, especially with all of these freshwater discharges with the canals and some of these other situations I mentioned earlier, usually we have a rapid decline in salinity. And so, the salinities are usually lowest at the end of the wet season, so, you know, near the end of the summer. And so, I can show you a lot of other data that ties into that. What I thought I would do today is, I went online yesterday to put the talk together, so I could send it to you in advance, and this is the two Indian River County sites. And so, this is data from last January, so January 1st, 2015, until yesterday morning. So, it shows you the two different stations, Vero Beach and Sebastian, I think you can see the color coding there. And you can see that the Vero Station is a lot lower, you can see this really big drop that we had in September this year. And I wonder if many of you remember, we had this real intense rain event, and it caused local flooding to the south, not so much where we live. And our rainfalls and our impacts in the southern network were much more substantial than they were right here in Vero Beach. And then you can see the salinities increased again, and then they started to decline again when we had a lot of rain in the latter part of January, salinities declined, and that happens to be the same time where to the south, that's when the discharges started with the Lake Okachobee. Our freshwater impacts here have had nothing to do with Lake Okachobee, but it's just a reflection that we were kind of seeing the same thing, but on a smaller scale, you know, locally.
Dr. Haney, I don't want to slow you down, but it looks like September 1st, there's a drop in salinity, like from thirty-five to under fifteen, and all in one day?
Yeah, that's a very heavy, and while you probably know, locally, when the canals open, they open very quickly, and those canals were built to discharge water really, really fast. I think the other day, I saw a little note, Grant Gilmore, one of the papers, and he oftentimes is one of the ones who talks about, he lives west of town, past King's Highway, and when water is flowing, it takes about five hours to go from there to the lagoon. So, imagine how fast those canals do fill up, and when they fully release the water, yeah, you can get a very, very dramatic increase. I'm not going to show any of the stuff from the south, but the entire St. Lucie Estuary, when they opened up the floodgates, basically became freshwater in just a few, very few hours. So, it's dramatic. It's a very fast response. So, yeah, good question. And this, in fact, I'm sorry, I am going to show you one quick one, because I figured I had to, the southern network, I went back and forth about that. But you can see what I'm talking about there in September, that same period of time, where you can see at the St. Lucie Estuary stations where they declined just very, very rapidly. The station to the north, the Jensen Beach, the one in red, that's the one that's further upstream from the lagoon. But the other stations, the other three stations, they all just collapsed at one time. That is not Lake Okachobee, that's just local water seeds, so kind of analogous to what we have here in Vero Beach. But what you can see there is, after a few days, the estuary recovers, because it was kind of just a one-shot, big rain event. If you look later, when they opened the gates to the south around the end of February, beginning of February, you can see a very dramatic decline, but you can see that it stayed low for a long time. You can see as they modified the flow rates from Lake Okachobee, we started to see a return to higher salinities, but never fully recovered. And in fact, since we're in the dry season, they should be a lot higher than what you saw, you know, for like the winter salinities up there. So, yeah, I like to talk about salinity, because it's something we all understand, and everything else is kind of correlated with it, so that turbidity, the nutrients, the chlorophyll, a lot of that all kind of ties in.
Doctor, just talking about salinity, what is the effect, let's say, on oysters, fish, and so on? I mean, with a level of five, ten, fifteen, how many hours can?
Okay, so with that chart up there, so probably that first dip, which was just a few days, that would have been very stressful to oysters and seagrass, but they would have survived. Seagrasses, it's probably on the order of, you know, maybe ten days to two weeks. Seagrasses, it's probably on the order of, you know, maybe 10 to 10 days to two weeks before you would have, you know, pretty much more heavy, you know, substantial mortality. Pretty much everything would die. For oysters, it's more like two to three weeks. So they would have been okay in that particular situation in September, but by the time you got to what happened in February and early March, that would have been really high mortalities for those really critical resources. And the reason most of the time people ask about, and why we focus on the science side for seagrasses and oysters, is because they're so critical for habitat. So seagrasses are nurseries for all kinds of fishes and habitat for all kinds of invertebrates as well. And oysters, besides their value alone, they also form great habitats for a lot of other organisms. They don't move, they're there. So they can't evade these things. Fishes can flee. If fishes can move away from the low salinity, they will.
What kind of level is really perilous, 10, 15, you know, on the chart?
It varies based on what we're talking about, but for example, like below, below like 10, you know, I think we're seeing, we would see a lot of stresses on those organisms that we just mentioned earlier.
Thank you.
So in that particular location, and it's, it has less salt down there than our local waters on average. You know, typically in the winter time, in the summertime, we were saying, you know, 15 to 20. So that's, that's okay. The organisms are able to handle that. It's about half of full strength salinity, but they're able to handle that. They're used to that kind of fluctuation in the estuary. But the extremes that you're seeing there, they're not.
So what's happening in February to March? Is that, is that just lots of rain, or is that slowly?
That's to the south, that is the freshwater discharges from Lake Okeechobee. So that's what you're seeing in that. And you're also getting some of that from the local waters, sorry, from the local watershed.
Yeah. Is that just a slow release, or is that?
No, that's a real heavy release. That's, that was when they basically opened the gates, you know, to a very large.
But that looks like it's for almost a month, right?
Yeah, yeah, and it kept going. It's still going on now.
Which would probably kill the oysters.
Yeah, they would be dead. Okay. So I then wanted to throw in one more slide because I was thinking, okay, so we have this fish kill to the north. And, you know, there was an article in the local paper on Sunday, I think, on the front page of the site. And it talked about the massive fish kills to the north. So long story short, that is due to this massive algal bloom, which the first time we saw those was in 2011 and then 2012. They were different types of blooms in terms of what composed them, but they were both bad. They're not toxic directly. In other words, they don't produce a toxic compound that kills things, which can sometimes happen. Like if you're, you know about Red Tide, that's one where there's a toxicity. What happens here is that the immediate impact is that it shades, reduces the light tremendously available to seagrasses. So one of the big losers when you have an algal bloom is loss of seagrasses, which, as we mentioned earlier, has a tremendous impact on a lot of other biological resources besides just seagrasses. In 2011, they called it a super bloom. They called it a super bloom because we'd never seen the number of cells per liter of water or the chlorophyll levels. They were totally off charts. They had never seen them in the decades of water quality monitoring in the lagoon. And also the duration, they went on for eight months, which is a very long time for an algal bloom. So that was one type of little green alga. 2012, that was replaced by something called the Brown Tide. Some of you may have heard of Brown Tide because it's been in other parts of the country, most notoriously in Laguna Madre in Texas, which is a coastal lagoon system just like ours, pretty much about the same latitude, same kind of subtropical situation. They had it for nine years in the 90s with very serious losses. So that's when we really started getting worried because we haven't seen these things before, either species, and the magnitude of them was very substantial. So what happened near the end of this past year, the Brown Tide started to return in Mosquito Lagoon, which is north of the Cape, but it's connected to the Indian River Lagoon. And it started to spread to the northern part of the lagoon into Banana River, down into Melbourne, so very extensive. There's some satellite images that are pretty available, if you're interested, I can send you one, which basically shows the northern part of the lagoon being totally, you know, pea green. It's really not a very pleasant thing to see.
So you send us those? That'd be great if you would send them to us.
Yeah, I'd do that. So I did this to show you what we have in local waters because I thought, you know, one of the things that people want to know is, do we have to worry about this bloom coming to us? So take a look. So we started the monitoring last January. You can see pretty low, pretty low levels. The number 10, that's 10 micrograms per liter, I use that kind of as a ballpark number to say bloom or no bloom. If it's less than 10, it's not a bloom. If it's more than 10, and it stays that way for more than a single hit, then I would say, you know, we have some, some things maybe to worry about. You'll see that at the end of our wet season, in September, we typically do see higher chlorophyll. And that's because we've had all this nutrients that have come into the lagoon, we're starting to see an uptick there, starts to go back down. So you do see at the northern station, the Sebastian Station, that we are seeing incursions of high chlorophyll water. Some of the folks that work up there have told me, yeah, there's a little bit that sometimes gets, gets just south of the inlet, and it kind of gets washed out through the inlet. The lower station, Vero Beach, we really have not seen, we haven't, we don't see any evidence of it being here. I do seagrass surveys twice a year. We've been doing them locally for a long time. And we were just out last, last week in our, in the Vero sites, and we're not seeing any impacts on seagrasses at this point in time. So so far, you know, everything looks okay. And I think the idea of why I was invited to present and so on is to make you aware of the technology, to let you know that it's available for everybody, that anybody can use it. So if you have like staff or somebody, I'm happy to, to walk them through it if they'd like, or, or any of that.
Doctor, this kind of, first of all, I was fishing mosquito and banana in February. There were no fish to catch. But the thing that is killing the fish supposedly, according to the press, is when the bloom dies.
Right.
Explain that for a minute.
Yeah, sorry, because I started to go that path and then I, then I.
Now it's worth talking about.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for asking that. So basically what happens, I told you about the seagrass losses. And that's what we saw in 2011 and 2012. We did not see this kind of fish kill to the north in those years. As a matter of fact, the fish biologist say they're not sure they had a tremendous impact on fishes at this point. What happened, you know, I think two weekends ago, is that the oxygen levels just bottomed out. And the reason that happened is that the bloom actually did start to dissipate, and it was starting to die back. And what was happening is you have all of this organic material that now is going to die. And when that happens, it's broken down by microbes, so bacteria, and they drive down the oxygen levels, dissolved oxygen levels, to such a low level that fishes and everything else, all the animals, there's not enough oxygen. If it's a small, little isolated embayment, fish will either flee if they can, or they get trapped and they die. We have a lot of little fish kills throughout the year. This was massive. And that's because this bloom was over such a large area, and when it started to crash, and at night, too. So even at night, those plants are not producing oxygen anymore. They're sucking up oxygen just like everything else. And so when I, when I heard of the bloom, the first thing I did, there's another monitoring effort, there's two other monitoring efforts in the lagoon that's real time. The one I went to was the St. John's River Water Management District because I knew where their locations were. And they have one in Merritt Island, which is kind of where the center was of the fish kill, as I understood it. And I looked at the data, and it was below one, one part per million. If it's below four, you start to get stressful to a lot of the animals. If it's below two, you really got to worry. When it's below one, and I'm sure that means in some places it was closer to zero, that's just not enough oxygen.
This is parts of oxygen.
Yeah, it's parts per million. It's kind of just the standard way, or sometimes you'll see the expression milligrams per liter, they're exactly the same thing. So, so, you know, besides the fishes, I'm sure there was a loss of a lot of invertebrates. There was probably a loss of all the microscopic animals as well. You know, that was one, always one of the issues in 2011, what caused that bloom? Okay, so obviously, when you have algae in the water, like in that magnitude, there's got to be a lot of nutrients, that's a given. And, and sometimes there also can be, part of the story can be that nothing's eating it. And so there is a lot of other work that's going on by other folks in the lagoon that are also working on, looking at that interaction between plankton and filter feeders. So not only does it have plankton, but you know, things like oysters and sponges and so on that, that can remove those cells from the water.
Could you go to the last slide? But what is it showing in March that high?
So it's showing that we are having real high, for our waters, very high chlorophylls. Now, these are very small compared to the bloom to the north.
Okay.
Because they're, they're much, they're, they would be like another, like, I'd have to extend the graph up through the next floor.
Okay, all right.
For us to really see that. But those are really high levels for our local waters. But what it seems to be is it's mostly coming from the north and, and not, it's not moving further south. And, you know, again, it's near an inlet, and you kind of see it peaked early on, and now it seems to have returned to a lower level. So, and I, again, I just did this mostly because of curiosity, you know, what were we seeing? And what I encourage everybody is to, is to realize that anytime we have something like an event, or say we have like a cold front, and you want to know how cold did it get? What else did it impact? Or we have a tropical storm, and you want to know exactly what happened with the water quality, you know, we'll be able to see that. In the past, we haven't been able to go out, you know, in small boats and do the traditional sampling. We can't do 24-hour sampling. So this is every hour on the hour, you know, for, for as long as we can keep, keep, keep the, keep the network going.
Do you talk in schools about this sort of thing? Do you?
I do, I do. We, we use this in our program. So at Harbor Branch, actually, the very first people that I showed this with was our students. So we have some undergraduates, we have graduate students. We also have a high school program hooked to St. Lucie County there. And we do utilize this, you know, in our, in all of our programs. And I have a meeting later this year where I'm going to be sharing this with teachers and so on. So, and this is just a quick wrap-up slide that I think the important thing here is that this technology is going to provide all of us, so whether it's a guy like me who's just interested in understanding how the lagoon works, or the agencies that are trying to manage the lagoon for sustainability, the students that you just mentioned, and of course, also the public, it's just unprecedented the amount of data that we're going to be able to get. We're going to get it real time via a free, publicly accessible website. There's also a group on the west coast of Florida, Sanibel, Captiva, and actually, they have a similar network, and that's on the other side of Lake Okeechobee. So it's downstream of the Cloosie Hachy River. And so the same issues that we have, they have. And so we will be working together with them so we have a better understanding of the bigger system, not just our, our part of it on this coast. And again, when that big hurricane someday comes up right through the center of the state, and we'll be able to see exactly what type of an event, a natural event like that could have as well. So I think it's going to really give us an unprecedented amount of ability to collaborate. It'd be good for managers. There's a lot of people who have much greater skills than I do when it comes to modeling. So for example, we want to, if people are going to spend a lot, the agencies and, and, you know, places like the counties and the cities are going to spend money with the idea that it's going to reduce nutrient loads in the lagoon, you want to know if that's really true. The only way you can do that is by long-term monitoring. One of the big challenges is that it varies so much from year to year because we have wet years, we have dry years, we have strange years, where, you know, it's wetter in the dry season than it should be. You know, we have El Nino this year. So you have to be able to filter all that out and answer the question, is the lagoon getting better in terms of this water quality factor or that water quality factor? So I believe that's what our greatest contribution is going to be. That'll probably take some good modeling. And as mentioned already, this is a good platform for education and outreach events. So that's my contact information, but I'm pretty easy to find, just Dennis at Harbor Branch.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you have anybody who wants to follow up, staff, or, you know, whatever, I'm always available.
Great, great.
Yeah, thanks very much. Thank you for your presentation, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for inviting me.
Mr. Di Maria with Youth Sailing.
Good morning. Victor Di Maria from Youth Sailing Foundation and Charlie Pope from Youth Sailing Foundation. We've been asked to come here this morning to speak about lease changes. We've run out of office space as if we ever had office space, and we're into the last year of our lease. And rather than get stuck in the fall trying to push a lease through, we'd like to get it initiated right now. Can you put the first slide on, Charlie?
Are we on, Danny?
Yes.
We are now.
Get there in a minute.
We still got the Harbor Branch.
We've been in the wastewater treatment plant for almost four years now. There we go. Okay. You can see in the upper right-hand portion of your screen that we occupy Building D. Building D is 3,750 square feet nominally. We're permitted 7,500 in the lease, so we're operating at 50% of our lease capacity in square footage. If you notice, on the left, the part marked boat storage, that's literally what we do. We put our larger boats in there and we do maintenance on them. We store our inflatables and things like that out of the weather in there. That occupies half of the entire building. On the right side, it says fab shop. That occupies two bays out of the six. The boat storage occupy three. That's where we build boats, that's where we do major rehab on boats, painting, varnishing, and so on. And the small portion marked class, that's a 20 by 30 room. It's our classroom, it's our conference room, it's our boardroom, it's our kitchen. We have meetings there that go into food after regadas and so on, we serve meals there and so on. And then in that room is a small room called a utility closet or an electric closet. Can you put that one up, Charlie? This is our executive office suite. You notice the electric equipment on two sides coming out a foot or two from the wall. There's also heavy conduit at the lower levels. We're able to sneak in a big file cabinet, a shelf for our T-shirt sales, and an area to put a computer down and some papers. That's worked really well for four years. We've had an administrative assistant, a contract worker in there for, for almost three years, and it gave them a place to operate. Minor problems, it's a metal frame building, metal siding, metal roof. It would cost over 2,500 bucks to bring a landline in, and you can't use a cellphone in there. So it's a little problem. When the phone rings, the gal picks up her phone and tears out the door into the driveway and carries on a conversation. Hopefully remembers enough to bring notes back when she comes back. So it's got its problems. The existing floor space on that is four feet by six feet. Starting in September, we will have three contract employees. We will have an executive director, we will have an office manager, the person who's been there all along, and during the season, 30 weeks of the season, we have a coach who's a contract employee. They all need a place to work. That won't get it done. So we have three plus. get it done. So we have three plus people in the office 30 weeks a year, two plus in there 50 weeks a year, and no telephone. Our solution is, we anticipate building a building. We'll get to that a little later on. We need two or three, maybe four years of temporary office space. Calls for a construction office. We can get a construction office at a very reasonable price. They just move it in. We run power to it. We occupy it. We've already got water and sewer in the building. So very simple. Only problem is, code 62.48F, which was written specifically for this occupation, was the uses shall only occupy existing buildings. I met with Tim. Tim said, we have to bring it to council and have you tell us to change the lease and adopt the code in the lease together and get us a new home. Third slide, Charlie? This is what it would look like. It's hiding behind the building. You won't even notice it from the street. It just occupies an area between two buildings on the plant. So it wouldn't be in anybody's face. It wouldn't look like a trailer from the street. You just look like a trailer when you got in it. And it would solve our problem until we can build a new building. So I don't know if we want to do a motion on that or do one on the entire presentation.
Well, I think if it's going to be an ordinance, it's going to have to come back. But I think, you know, I mean, just as a matter of consent, does anybody have a?
Yes.
No, I, you know, I mean, makes sense. And I think it's a separate issue from the rest of it. But my suggestion would be, let's bring an ordinance back and change it so they can put a trailer there. It's fine.
Yeah.
We will proceed in that direction.
I don't know what the other four think, but that's what I think.
I hear no objection. We'll bring it back to your consideration, and the council can determine at that point.
Okay. Okay, Charlie, next slide. All right. So we don't get caught in a crunch in the fall. We'd like to bring up lease issues now. We've had a prevailing lease issue with FDOT on the right-of-way under the 17th Street Bridge. They've changed personnel in the department and instantaneously, we had resolution. The paperwork is being done now. Rob and FDOT are working together, and I assume Jim will be involved very shortly. And that will be resolved. So it's a good time to execute a new lease. Wayne and Jim sent us a copy of the Indian River Rowing Club lease. We've examined it. We've had our attorney examine it, and it would be lovely. We'd be happy to move forward with something like that, just changing the names of the parties and so on. We have something unique, though. We would like to ask for a lease term of 50 years, the same as the theater and the museum. Why? The theater and the museum are community assets. They benefit all the personnel of the city of Vero Beach and Indian River County. We see the Youth Sailing Foundation as a community asset. It's an institutional establishment. It's now available to all the students, all the grammar school students in the county, all the high school students at Vero Beach High School, Indian River Charter High School, all the homeschool students. And we are negotiating terms with St. Edwards to have them start in the fall. And it requires a little more complex negotiation because we have them run their program in our facility with our teachers, but they take care of their own people. They do their own personnel work. When that is finished, we have only Sebastian River High School, and we have the entire county covered. That's coming. Right now, we're doing about 100 students a week on the water in the high school class alone. We're doing maybe 40 or so in the grammar school classes. We anticipate that in five years, we're going to have three times the number of students. Just by adding Sebastian River is going to put a big bump in there in St. Ed's. We're going to draw more people from each school, and we're going to have a larger adult program. And we anticipate 15,000 sailor days per year. We're starting to get up into theater and museum numbers. That's why we see ourselves as requiring a longer-term lease. It also requires facilities commensurate with that population. That requires donations. We charge nothing for grammar and high school students. They sail free. So we have to have a large donor base. It's very difficult to go out and get big money for a big investment like what we have for our new building, when you only have a five-year lease. I mean, someone doesn't want to make it a family landmark using the family name, when five years later, it's going to be God knows what, you know, that's gone. They need some certainty. We're going to need a major expansion of the facility to support growth. We've already completed about 80% of the permitting, all but the building and a couple add-ons. Can you turn it 90 degrees clockwise? Oh, all right. That worked. All right. If you'll note, this is a layout of the water side of the campus. We've developed Building C. We put a ramp and some dockage back, two-thirds of the way back to Indian River Boulevard. Worked really fine for a couple of years until we started getting larger number of boats and more than just a little opti fleet. When the high school fleet started growing, the launch area became untenable. So we moved the high school fleet out under the bridge and launched on a ramp into the water, straight into the river. It just changed things dramatically. It became so much more efficient, and we got much more time on the water. We didn't waste it trying to get out the long canal and towing them out. You had to tow them in or out. You know, they can't sail straight into the wind. So we got permits for the canal in there. You see where it says Adult 2015 and Chase 2015? That's where we store our adult boats, our keel boats. And that's where we store our chase boats, our safety boats. They're just a few seconds from the river. And when we're launching boats out there, everybody's out there. They just walk to the chase boats and bring them in. And we've got a spectator area out there. And you can see that we have planned for a building. It's right behind the line of, can you see my laser there? I can't see my laser there. My laser doesn't show on your screen. Okay. That's the new, that would be where the new building would go, right on the riverfront. To the right of that is our ramps. And the entire area there has been permitted and pretty much developed. Charlie, can you bring up the next one?
Before you leave that one, Vic.
Yeah.
If you look at the right-hand side of that, you have the 17th Street Causeway crossing it. Charlie, I don't know whether you can move farther inland, move your slide down a bit. In other words, pull it down so the tanks, no, I guess your picture is limited.
Yeah.
But one thing that may or may not happen is at the far northeast, or the far right-hand, top right-hand corner of that, there's a fence currently between the electric plant and underneath the bridge. It's completely possible, all of that fencing is going to change, depending upon what Jim can work out and what's desirable and the DOT and all the rest of it. So that's going to change. In other words, I talked earlier about what happens when the cooling towers are gone, and there's a building in the very far upper right-hand corner. You can't quite see it. And of course, there's a fishing ramp about halfway down on the right-hand side, or there's a dock. And all of that is going to change. So one thing we have to be concerned about is, you know, how it all interacts together concerns me.
I don't, I think this, it's a, the progress you have made and the, what you've done for the community is outstanding. There's no question about that. But somehow, we've got to stop and think what we do with this whole piece of property and what's the best for the community to include you, I'm sure. But somehow, we've got to figure that all out. And to lock it in now for 50 years seems to me premature to do that, if we're going into the, just going into this planning process for these two pieces of property.
You know, I have in front of me a scope of work which the city council asked the city manager to develop, which we have not acted on, and I don't know that we agree with, but I generally agree with it, though. And it talks about the earlier presentation that Dana made. You know, I think that scope of work, I'm saying the same thing as Randy. As you know, I'm a great supporter of yours, and you do a wonderful job. I think, I think 50 years is a reach. Quite frankly, one of the things I, Mr. Old has been working on objectives for, the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk, and I, yesterday I was working on them. No one's seen one of my work except me, I guess. But one of the things I put in it was the suggestion that over the next six to 10 years, we consider what we're going to do with what currently is the sewer property, whether the property remains there or is moved. And all of that fits into the scope, all that fits into the vision plan and the rest of it. Let me go, let me shortcut it. I don't see that if the plant is only moved or not moved, it'll happen before six to 10 years. I mean, I personally, if you need another five years, that to me makes sense. I don't know.
And you could bring in, you could bring in more buildings to make your expansion possible. I mean, you could, you could bring in more trailers to make it work. But it just is not, you're not spending money to build things. And it allows it to be a little bit plastic for what happens in the future, what we come up with in the future. I think to tie everybody's hands now for 50 years is, I think is early. But I don't think there's any lack of support for the effort you've gone through, or applause for what you've gone through and what you've done for the community. There's no question. It's wonderful.
I think you're, I think you'll get the support, but I think you're asking too early because we've got to go through what we're going to do in total with the three corners. And obviously, you're going to be part of it, or at least if I have anything to say about it, I'll certainly vote in, oh, what you've done is wonderful, and it needs to be added on to. I just think you're a little premature to go that many years. That's all I think.
Mr. O'Connor, what's the anticipated date to be finished with the debt service on the water treatment plant? Is it about 15 years from now?
2021. December 2021.
Just one issue goes off in 21.
Yeah, I think it's only one issue.
Yeah, there's only one issue, and that's finalized in, I think it's August or September of 2021. And Rob says it takes him six years to move out of there.
I think he is right. I think it is the only debt service on the wastewater treatment plant is that 21-22 timeframe.
There's actually, we have a cafer here, and there's actually two loans on the thing.
Okay.
And one of them is 21, but one of them that actually extends, it can be paid off, but extends beyond 21. But 21 is a good date. I mean, you know, if you're looking to go to 21, great.
And Rob says it takes six years to move. Rob says it takes six years to move and get operational. So before you could.
Plus $35 million.
Just so we don't lose scope of what we're talking about here.
$30 million, right.
And no one has any idea whether it'll be moved or not moved.
Yeah.
But we're going to study it.
Yeah.
We had meetings in here with the Marina Commission and the Recreation Commission. I prepared the next slide for discussion on that. We never got there, and then they concluded that. If you'll note, it's broken into thirds. The part proximate to Indian River Boulevard is for commercial use, retail, whatever. The center portion would be park, and the front portion would be recreation. That was pretty much what was decided in this room two, three months ago.
Well, it was what was recommended, but, you know, until the kind of process that Dana or an outside firm goes through and the visions, and until we have charrettes and ask the public, there's nothing decided.
Well, also, we need a referendum.
And we need a referendum.
And if you look at the view, you can see the area that we occupy, which would be the riverfront third, would be sufficient for us in perpetuity. I mean, I don't, unless Vero Beach and Indian River County gets much larger, that would satisfy our needs for the next 20, 30, 40 years.
You know, Vic, while you have this up here, this is going to make the point I was trying to make earlier. If you look at the area north of the 7th Street Causeway where the power plant currently is, there's a fence around that entire property up where it touches tarpon area, where it touches the river, where it touches the street, where it touches the bridge. Hopefully, we don't know, but hopefully, as long as the blue building remains, whatever amount of the time that is, nobody knows that either, the only fence that'll be will be around the blue building. That's just going to be an open expanse. And then, when we have the opening expanse, we have to figure out how, what we do with it, which is going to involve everything that Randy just said. I just think, I just think some number of years makes sense, but not 50.
What this envisions, if you look closely at the drawing where the inlet is for oil delivery, that masks the back of almost all of our bays right now. So what we would have to fence off would just be a very short area behind the bays that we occupy to keep stray people from going in and playing with our boats. That's it. So, you know, we're not blocking any traffic. We envision going back some distance behind a reused water tank and coming through from both directions for traffic underneath the bridge.
Mr. City Manager, what do you think?
I do, I don't believe we should go into any long-term lease at this time. The five or six years, I have no objection, no problems with at all. And then the temporary buildings could be an option for them to use. To go back, Mr. Howell, to answer your question, we do have a state revolving loan on this project till 2030. But they could be paid off because state revolving loans could be paid at any time. But to me, and I've talked to Vic, he's talked to me about this. I told him that, in my opinion, a 25- or a 50-year lease was just too extensive, if in fact, we are going to seriously consider future uses of these sites.
I concur.
That requires that we severely curtail our expansion. What would go out there would be additional classrooms. To put a classroom trailer in, they have, require power, sewer, water, everything else. We have to bring all the facilities for the building out there and just have a building that would be unable to sustain a hurricane.
You know, I, I think what you're, what you're talking about is going to make a great deal of sense. But you're asking for a long-term commitment before we've done our visioning. When Dana was here a while ago, he was talking six to eight months on a project. Probably a year from now, we will finish up understanding what we're going to do with these three parcels of property. And probably then, you'll get, you can get a favorable hearing because obviously, what you're doing is wonderful. It's just too simple.
Okay. Six years till the loan's paid off. Six years until Rob can get out of there.
I'm not so sure that that's, I think if you start planning now and start designing and start everything like that, I'm not so sure that it takes, once you've made all the decisions and everything like that, then it takes six years. I think you can start some of the process early. I'm not positive of what I'm saying, though.
If you look at what we can.
I think you're right.
If you look. If you look at what we consume, if you look at what we consume out there, we would use half of the waterfront. We consume a previously unused water outlet canal, and we consume real estate under a bridge. I mean, we're not taking up a lot of wonderful real estate there. That's not usable for many other sort and many other reasons.
I don't think anyone has a argument with you. It's just, and, you know, possession is nine-tenths of the law. The Sailing Cub is going to be here. We just are not in a position to do what you want when you want it. If you want to extend, I would be for it. If you want to extend six years, fine. And if you want to come back in a year, fine.
Maybe there's some way to work this school, the classroom thing that we haven't thought of, some kind of temporary thing, somewhere that there's maybe some other, some other hookups that we could use so that you could satisfy the needs of a class. I don't know.
Use the big blue building.
Yeah. There's a lot of space in the big blue building. But maybe there's some other way to do this. We want to support you, but we just can't, we can't tie basically future councils to limit the use of these properties. We just can't do it.
Jim, the building where the SOC is there, see it up on the right-hand side? Can that be moved the other side of the bridge?
Oh, that building doesn't exist.
Yeah, it does. I was in it, it's got three boats in it.
Yeah, there's a small building there.
No, no, this one, this one.
That anticipates a recreational use. That's actually the Vero Beach Yacht Club.
Yeah, he's anticipating us moving our, our building out of there. Our building is closer to where the water is.
Our building is kind of shaded out there.
Oh, okay.
It's under the grass a little.
But there is a building there.
There is a building there, yes. And that building, under our present plan, will remain after we demo and clean out the rest of this because it's a perfectly good building and has waterfront access and could be used maybe for, I don't know what it could be used for, but come in January, we'll have a much better picture of what is available there.
Maybe it could become our classroom.
I assume there's no other way.
It's a good building. It's a building very similar to the one you've got, but maybe better.
And it's, it's not going to move. I mean, it's very strong, big girds, and it's very strong. I don't know if it's got restrooms in it or anything like that.
It does not have restrooms.
Got a boat ramp and it's got a dock.
The problem is more complicated than that. We now have 110 volunteers, 110. Tuesday and Thursday morning, you got to drop by. That place is a zoo. We are out of places to work, we're out of places to store, we're out of places to put machinery to build boats. And our hurricane plan, we now have 80 boats on campus. Our hurricane plan includes putting like 65 or 70 of those 80 boats in the building and take the others off-campus to a boat builder out on the other side of the railroad tracks. We had a hurricane dry run a few months back, and Charlie can tell you in more detail. I was lucky enough to be up north. Guys worked for four or five days getting everything off-campus. It's not easy. It takes a lot of people, a lot of time, and then at the end of four or five days, the all-clear whistle blows, and you turn around, take, put all the masts back up, bring them back, put, re-rig all the boats. It's quite a rain dance. And our ability to grow is pretty much limited by the size of the real estate we're in right now. We're in 3,500 square feet. We're looking at building 7,500 square feet. We need room.
Well, I think we ought to be talking about how we can do this with you, but I, but the idea of us committing for a long-term lease is just, we just can't, we just can't do that one.
It can't be done outside the visioning process. I mean, we've got to have everybody to the table.
So what if, ask Mr. O'Connor to meet with them and talk with y'all and see if we can come up with some other options or alternatives, or temporary plan? Once again, I think everybody's saying, yeah, U.S. Sailing is great, we support it, but let's find a workable way to move forward.
That's right.
And then Mr. O'Connor would be so kind as to try to get with y'all, look at what's there, see, you know.
The reason that we, the reason that these properties are so important is because that's, this is it. This is all we have left, and we really have to be very careful about what we do with these properties moving forward. And Mr. Old made a good point. It would be irresponsible of us to tie future councils to a 50-year lease when we don't know what we are going to do with this, this site. They're also limiting the referendum, too, you know?
And it's too bad that there's not another location that would be suitable for your needs. I'm assuming there's not.
We've studied that very thoroughly, and it doesn't exist in Indian River County. Yeah.
Well, it's an ideal location because the wind, the wind is there, the southeast wind, the south and southwest wind is absolutely perfect.
And it's a good partnership. I mean, there's no question, the city is very happy with what's going on. There's no doubt about that.
Just like the rowing club had to move over to the east side of the river because they couldn't stand the wind. We have to be on the west side of the river. Vero Isles is sold out.
But I think the suggestion made is that you work with the city manager. If you need more than a trailer, temporary facilities or whatever, if you need the length of the lease, some number of reasonable years, as long as we can still do the visioning plan, so be it.
The problem is quite deep. If we were to put temporary buildings out near the water, we have to be near the water. To put temporary buildings out there, bringing utilities out there is going to be $50,000, $70,000 to bring them all out. There's nothing. We got to go all the way to Indian River Boulevard. So the infrastructure is a significant portion of the cost. And to put temporary buildings out there is quite a hurricane exposure, and how do you put temporary storage out there for 50, 60 boats? You know?
Vic, I think what it comes down to is you're talking to five legislators here. We're going to pass the buck to Jim. You need to talk to Jim. I mean, that's the reality of it. He's written the scope, he's done this, he's done that. Talk to him.
We're behind you. There's no doubt, we're behind you, but we've got our hands tied in terms of a long-term lease.
He comes back and says you just should do so and so, you'll probably get it, but you got to talk to him, not us. He manages the city, we don't.
It goes without saying, I mean, what you've done with this group is just absolutely outstanding, and I'm proud of the group that you've created and your group has helped to create. So it, you know, we all like to say, yeah, let's do it, but.
It definitely puts the skids on our business plan, having to deal with temporary buildings.
I explore the possibility of classroom elsewhere. Why not using the River House or Bethel Creek House as an area to have classroom?
We get kids for, typically, the high school kids are the biggest problem. They get out of school, they can get there at about 2:30. The whole winter season, it's dark by 4:30, 5 o'clock. To school them two, three miles away, drive them there, drive them back, rig boats, it just doesn't happen. That's why we want to move from where we are out to the water to save the time, to make it more efficient. Transporting from one location to another doesn't work.
No, we may need to make some accommodations to work within the facilities that we have, Vic.
Let me add one more thing. Six years until the loan's paid off, we're not going to prepay it. Six years to move. Can we get a 12- or 15-year lease? We're not affecting anything. That land won't be available for a minimum of 12 years.
It'd be something to take into consideration, but not to be decided today.
Talk to Mr. O'Connor.
Vic, I'll be glad to talk to you and have some increments. The other element that he doesn't like in the leases that we have is the city has the right to take the property back with a given notice period.
And that's in all of our lease, city leases, every single one.
So we would have to work within those confines.
Wayne, is that so? I believe the rowing club has a lease without that contingency.
No, it's in there, too.
I don't know, I don't have it in front of me.
It's in the rowing clubs, too.
Not the one for wastewater treatment plant.
No, for their new facility.
Yeah, the one for the wastewater treatment plant.
But when they take it over.
I think we have that in all of our leases, and also we have, it's the assets revert to the city's ownership.
Yes, that's true. That is true.
Well, actually, they belong to the city when they're built.
Yes, once they're built, they are city property, yeah.
That's a tax issue, so.
Okay, we'll meet with you, and we can proceed with the approval for the trailer?
We will have to introduce an ordinance.
Yeah, I think you got the okay for that one.
So we'll be bringing an ordinance. Tim, can you have it by the next council meeting, the first reading? He will have it by the first council reading at the, go ahead, please. Just to make sure that we cover all the bases.
We have to go through the planning and zoning board, so it won't be the next. We'll do it as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Damati.
With that, I'm going to ask the council, I know, I know we'd probably need to take a five-minute break real quick. We are obviously not going to get this meeting done before lunchtime. So my question to the council is, is do we want to do, to break for lunch right before the consent agenda? We'll have two more presentations and then break. Does that work for?
Why don't we go to 12:30 or so and get a couple more presentations out of the way?
Well, reason being is I got, I got people here, and they probably would rather leave and come back after lunch rather than.
Well, it's your call.
I would suggest, I would agree with you, Mr. May. Let's finish up the presentations and then break for lunch.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to break right before the consent agenda?
Before the consent agenda.
So if your item is after, after 3:00, what time you come back? 1:30? 1 o'clock, 1:30?
Let's do it when we finish the presentations.
Okay, well, I'm just thinking of giving these guys a heads up as to when to come back. But with that, let's take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 11:57 and a half.